It's your pleasure.
What?
At your pleasure.
It's your potential pleasure.
We're now convening the September 21st meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We put it on the right side, yeah.
Thank you.
It's supposed to be on the other side.
It was on the other side the other day.
It must have gotten switched.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence while we think about our brave soldiers who are serving overseas and others who are put at risk to help our community. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is public comment, and I see no one here for public comment, so therefore we can get into the item on the agenda called "Update on Barnstable Village Revitalization Plans and Impact on County Complex by Patty Daly and the Cape Cod Commission."
Do you have any of those practice?
It was on that two weeks ago, or last time I was here.
Hi, good morning.
Hello Patty.
Thanks for having me.
I might mention one thing before we start, is that Ann Kennedy had expressed an interest in, let's say, in being here, and I don't see her yet, but we are a few minutes early, so I might, I might, if she shows up, I might ask you to repeat anything that is pertinent to that.
And if I just might put in there, after Patty gives her presentation, we met with this group, you know, they think it would be good for them to come in, they would like to come in at some point and tell us what's going, you know, their, their side of the story.
Who is that? I'm sorry.
This is the Barnstable Village Improvement Association.
Yes.
So, recently met with the, there are three groups actually, the Barnstable Village Business Association, the Civic Association, and the Friends of the Harbor. So, all three groups have been working together and have come up with some ideas that they all agree on to improve the area, and they expressed to us that the county is a very important part of that, it's a county complex. So, they've done quite a bit of work actually, and they've spoken with the town about making some improvements around speeding and parking issues that the town can control on their Route 6A portion of the village. They're also moving forward on building some walking trails down behind the tavern, Barnstable Tavern building, and along back behind the Dolphin. And to that end, the Dolphin has, through permission of the Conservation Commission, cut down a bunch of fragmites that were blocking the view of the marsh, and I believe that the Robert Paul Building owners will also do that as well. So, they're taking steps to kind of strengthen these public-private partnerships to do some improvements that will make the experience for visitors and residents nicer in the village.
I have some concern about if they are cutting or cutting down fragmites. One of the concerns that we have on a continuing basis is the use of chemistry to, let's say, to control that, and I'm wondering whether or not that's included in their plans, because although, you know, the focus has been on one specific entity, you know, I think we have a continuing concern based upon the plan that the Cape Cod Commission has come up with, and I'm hoping there's some consistency there with regard to mechanical extraction of the fragmites and the management of them.
We didn't get into that, but I can certainly find out. So, I don't know the answer to that.
So, to, just so I can recap, okay, which association of those three are the ones that you met with?
There's a consortium, so I met with one of each.
Yes.
So, they've been working together.
So, all three have been working together, that's good news.
Right, and one of the first questions I asked was, do you have consensus? And they said, yes, very much. In fact, they put, for the walking trail plan, they put a paper plan together and shared it with all the neighbors and revised it in response to what they heard from some of the residents. So, I think they're being very careful to listen and adjust their plans as they move along. Where the county comes in is, I think, what's of great interest to you guys, but they'd like to kind of strengthen their partnership with you and come in and let you know what, more specifically, their plans are. But they do involve using the county parking complex off hours, so over the weekends perhaps to do some entertainment, or farmer's market, or other things that will attract people to the village and to the stores and increase the livability and liveliness of the village, if you will. They mentioned the parking sign at the entrance to the parking lot that identifies it as a county complex, but doesn't identify it as visitor parking for off-hour times, and is something they'd like to chat with you about. So, your sign right now says Barnstable County.
Parking, complex parking.
Complex parking or court parking, something like that. So, they're, you know, wondering if the commissioners might be amenable to identifying that as a place where visitors might park when the complex isn't open.
You know, that's an interesting comment, because I'm thinking of all the town halls on the Cape, and it doesn't, and they don't say town hall parking.
It says public parking.
It's public, I mean, it's just there. It doesn't say anything, it just says like Yarmouth Town Hall.
Right.
And there's a parking place. And of course, I realize we have a courthouse and all of that, which does make it a little different.
Using the parking lot is not sort of unusual. I'm contacted all the, not all the time, but regularly about, you know, they do the touch-a-truck thing in here, and they've done the build, the art association thing, and so we do use it quite frequently, but yeah, I think maybe people just don't know, it's public parking.
But people could even park here during the week if they wanted to. They probably just couldn't get a space.
Yeah, in the morning, it's R S.
It's so crowded, yeah.
If I can chime in here, if you remember more than several months ago, it was probably this time last year, we were approached by Joanne, or at least I was, Joanne Miller-Bundtich, we were invited to one of the first sort of visioning sessions at St. Mary's, and I went to attend that, and somebody forgot the key, we were talking about this, so the meeting had to be canceled, it was a very rainy night. Then there was another one which I was unable to attend, but they did ask for the Cape Cod Commission's participation in sort of figuring out a plan, or helping them with their plans. That was stated, but it was never really followed up on, you know, with vigor. We have talked about, you know, building, a building committee, about what are we doing with the building, what are we doing with this space? So, I think, you know, it's unfortunate that we didn't get in on this in the beginning, but it's not too late, and I think that what we can do is look at the parking, for a lot of reasons. People that go to courts, you know, the courts have a hard time, people trying to find spaces, our employees, our employees from the district attorney, I mean, District Attorney O'Keefe has approached me on this, trying to get together, he would like to be able to find space up there, he says, I'd rather pay rent to you than what we're doing. The commission could find space where in the building, as opposed to paying rent outside, so this could all be rent coming back into the county. And then we could look at this parking area where there could be designated maybe employee parking of the complex of these entities, and then have the court, you know, the court and public parking. They also mentioned, when they do use the parking facilities on the weekends and they ask permission, the, in August, they had a music fair or some kind of family fair, and what they did is they put the, a band, there was music playing, they put a band on the, on the concrete or, you know, the parking area, and if, going up to where the jail is, there is sort of a self-natural, self-made natural amphitheater, because there is this grassy slope that comes down. So, people sat on the slope with their children, and the children would be able to run around, and it was a really beautiful, you know, family day for them. So, it worked out really well, and they were saying, gee, even if we could build in maybe, I don't know if this is going another step too far, but like build in a little corner where there is like this little amphitheater where you could have public, you know, public announcements, you could have public events, this sort of thing. So, that's one idea that they threw out there. But it does, even though everybody can use these municipal parking spots, ours does say parking for county, you know, county work. So, that, the low-hanging fruit is, could we change a sign?
Well, there's, one thing, I'd make a suggestion, that at the library in Harwich, for example, it says more parking is available behind Town Hall.
Right.
And these businesses could do that immediately.
Right.
Is put up a sign that say parking is available at the county complex. So, they, I mean, they, and that would, someone who wants to do business with a particular business.
Right.
Has an immediate opportunity to do that.
Right, right.
And that, and I think that that, you know, beyond going through the, you know, the, let's say, the activity, and I'm certain, I don't think there's any, you know, there's any reason not to say public parking, but we have received, you know, communications from the court in the past about the pressure on the availability of parking for people who are coming for jury duty and things like that. But that window, because we had done, well, I guess 10 years ago, we've done a parking study, and the big thing in the parking study was the window of need was from eight o'clock in the morning till about noon, and then after that, when the juries were dismissed, the parking tends to open up. So, from noon until whenever, there is more opportunity to use the parking, and I would suspect that someone who was shopping, you know, could take advantage of that, and perhaps, you know, these folks should do that. But I recall, I guess it's almost three years ago, going to some meeting that they had, you know, at, of a business association here in the village, and the question that I had put to them during the meeting and afterwards was that had they made up their mind with regard to what they were looking for? Were they looking for a destination? Were they looking for connectivity between the harbor and the, you know, and the village itself? And where, where the commercial venue, which was supported by the presence of the Department of Corrections personnel, who were supporting the dry cleaner and the takeout, and, let's see, there's, there's a grocery store.
A barber shop and all that.
Barber shop and all of that, that, although, at least look at your haircut over here.
Yeah.
That, you know, that the opportunity, you know, these were things that they, they had not really given me a sense of, this is what they want to do, and this is how we participate in it.
Well, I think that they've come to this.
We're getting off the topic.
Yes, okay, so now we're gonna let you finish.
No, I just want to make one comment though about parking. We might consider in the budget that we do angle parking instead of straight in, because you get more spaces with the angle. And it might be something that we could do on that whole upper.
I think this has all been studied.
Oh, it has.
I guess it has.
Well, you don't even need to study it, it's just, you just get more when the, when the slots are angled.
There may be an old study, yeah.
I think there's a couple of, the commission has looked at this a couple of times.
They have angle parking, they have angle parking.
With that, why don't you continue, and then we can think of all of these wonderful ideas.
So, I think just, you know, generally, I think they, they have come to a point where they've gained some consensus about what it is they want to do, and they'd like to talk to you about opportunities that, you know, that might help them. So, I think they want to capture some of the folks who are driving through, visiting, they want to make it more lively for people who live here, and they want to support the business interests here, so.
And those are the three issues that, that I asked, what, you know, was their element of focus?
Right.
Because if they wanted a, you know, let's say, a village center, you know, that, you know, that generates one, you know, I'd say one way of looking at it, because you think about circulation and things that, you know, that you mentioned as far as walking trails and things like that. If they want this to be a commercial destination, then, you know, then there has to be a different kind of a focus with regard to, is this truly a worthwhile destination when you're competing with the mall? So, what kind of, you know, let's say, what kind of commercial venues would be avail, you know, would be useful in order to make this, you know, a worthwhile destination?
You know, I think I'd let them speak to that, but I think they just want to support the businesses that move in here, and one good piece of news is hopefully we're getting a new grocery across the street.
That is good news.
That was great.
Yes.
Yeah, and just to share with you these promotional materials.
And they do have, they do have a whole packet of their plan, of which they gave me a copy, and I think they gave you a paper copy, and I didn't stick my briefcase this morning.
They're supposed to drop one off, I don't have to have.
But she's going to, they were going to drop several off for you to look at. However, I think it's a good time for us, it's, as I say, it's not too late for us to get engaged, whether it's through the commission, to partner with them, and look at the, look, let's take a look at first the, the parking space. We have parking behind, up by the, you know, behind the probate building, there's some off the side off of Old Jail House Road that you can come into, there's a lot of parking that people are unaware of, and how can we configure it? Does it need to be, you know, spruced up a bit? Do we need to reconfigure it? And how can we designate, even during those morning periods where there's employee parking and maybe public, then public parking that's sort of for those who are using the court system, or just having to run an errand? And they're not deterred from running that errand because of parking, and going over to, you know, the Stop &amp; Shop or what have you. So, all right.
I mean, I think the best thing is for them to come in and meet with you and kind of tell you their plans, because they, they very much recognize that whatever the county does in this complex with its buildings and the parking, you know, affects what they are trying to do as well.
But I will point out that in past time, when there's been some concern about what we would do, you know, with the building, you know, with, with the complex, that we have always tried to reach out to, you know, the village associations and the historic associations to make sure that we were working in concert with regard to any issues that, you know, that require a change in use or change in the configuration of the buildings. We're very much aware of the fact that we, while we're landlords, we're also part of, you know, we're, we're neighbors.
Right, right. And I think that's all they're really looking for, and our cooperation where we can, where we can, and what, how we can face that cooperation, and especially if there's a monetary value to it, or, you know, costs associated. But I think they're doing a great job, they are looking at, I think that there's, and rightfully so, with the revitalization of the general market across the street. I know just from personal anecdotal, you know, observation that the town of Wellfleet, which basically closes its doors once the end of October comes around, there was still a very lively center once our market was, was taken over, leased over to a really viable, wonderful market that, that was able to offer you all the things that you would go down to Stop &amp; Shop or another store for, including everything from sort of Gucci gourmet to, to everyday needs and within reasonable prices. So, that alone does generate, and then there's like the coffee clashes in the morning of the locals, and so there's, there is a sense of community that's created, and I think with that sense of community, they're looking that that would attract, and the ability to have parking, the access to the harbor, the access to the beaches, all of this will generate a village, a lively village center that people will be happy to have near their home and, and near their work.
Well, I'm really thinking about this, because I haven't been, I haven't been to any of their meetings yet, but I'm thinking of the whole concept of the revitalization of a village, you know, what that really entails, and also the, a sense of place, that the concepts regarding a sense of place, and I guess that would be something that I would think about, that, what those core values are around revitalization and sense of place, and what are they attempting to achieve? There they are.
Are you telling me early in your genesis?
No, it says 9:35.
9:35, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was 9:05.
That's okay. I mean, like that whole thing, and then how you get there, and what do you have to do? Because I'm thinking back to my time, what, 20 years ago, on a revitalization project on Main Street, and I know everything that went into it. Of course, that was a much bigger deal at the time.
I think, you know, you start by looking at your assets, and we talked about all the museums and the historic assets that are here, and clearly the natural beauty behind, in the, in the marsh, and so I.
Well, I'm just saying, I really, would you like to jump there?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ann.
Basically, Ann, we kind of brought this up to.
Let's introduce to people that Ann Kennedy, Town Councilor.
And Alzabresat, who's on the committee.
Hi.
Which committee is that?
Nice to meet you.
I'm on the Barnstable Village Visioning Committee.
Okay, so you're not part of a civic business or?
No, I'm a community at large, I'd say.
Just a community at large. So, Ann, what we did is we basically spoke about our meeting that we had last week, where you are at, and really how we can help in the initial stages, and then it would even help us, maybe prompt us to take another look at our own configurations while we're doing it. But, you know, we were talking about the access to parking, the, the walkway to the, the natural walkway to the harbor, the, the new business, the new market coming in, which will generate some, you know, more life and vitality here, and how we can assist in that by just, even just focusing on the parking issue first, and then we can go on from there.
One of the things we discovered was that, when we had done the parking studies in the past, that between eight o'clock and noon time, parking is, you know, is fairly tight, but from noon time on, parking does open up, because all of the court pressure from the courts has been, been relieved. The other thing that we mentioned with regard to signage is that at most places, let's say, for example, in Harwich, at the library, there's a sign at the library that says more parking is available behind Town Hall, and we believe that businesses that are here in the, in, you know, in the village could say that parking is available, you know, as to county complex, and that could be done prior to putting any signage up, you know, that says this is now public parking. Because I think that if somebody is coming to, specifically to a destination business, that if there was some, you know, direction there about parking, that that might be more useful than having a public.
You know, if I could, I think, we're a business here, the county is actually a business, as, but because of the courthouse, because of the county government, and because of the commission. So, we have a place here, in a sense, and, and as a business, we are contributing something to the village, but we also have a responsibility to contribute back. And I think that's kind of how we need to look at, is what do we contribute to this, to the village?
Yep.
And what is it that we can do to participate and to, and to give back to the village so that it can be enriched? Because we're here as a business, so to speak.
We look at it in terms of long range and short range. Long range, you're exactly right. You are an integral part of this village, we, we feel that you are, are a butter, a neighbor, part of the community, and we, we want you to be involved in our visioning, and on the same token, we would like to be involved in your planning. Because whatever happens up here will affect negatively or positively whatever happens in the, in the, in the village. If you reconfigure your parking, maybe we could contribute to that, just make suggestions or even promote it within the community. If you have visions for the use of the jailhouse, maybe we can help with that vision. So, we hope that you will include the town as a whole, and, but more specifically, the village in, in any planning that you have.
And if I just might just put a little cautionary note in this, you know, to be able to say, to put out to businesses right now, to say that there's available parking, that's all well and good, but even as we speak, you know, we don't know how many parking spaces, I'm not sure, somebody must know, how many parking spaces we have available here, behind the radio tower, behind, you know, this building here off of Jailhouse Road. How many spaces do actually exist? How many employees generally use those on a daily basis? So, we need that sort of, because I've been, I've been here, I've been over at the commission for meetings, where people are late just circling and circling trying to find a parking space. So, there has to be some kind of designated spots for business, for, as you say, the business of the day, the courts, and that sort of thing. So, we have to sort of have an idea of how much we have, what is our need, and how long do we need that need, so that then we can open it up and, and have those designations. So, I wouldn't want everybody to just say, oh, we can all park over there, and everybody that works here is late for their court trial or their hearing.
I think one, you know, one of the things that John, I've been talking to John Blaisdell about, he sort of follows up on you about the angle parking, is I think we're gonna need to redo the parking lot, just from a maintenance perspective.
Or maybe clear some more, so they give some more space if possible.
Just, I think if you paint the lines, so where the spaces are is a lot clearer, you kind of, you almost add spaces that way. So, that's something that I think we can contribute in the future, is kind of maintaining the parking lot.
Well, the other thing I was thinking of too, is that we contribute to the village because we have a lot of people here. We have employees, and then we have people who come to use the complex for whatever reason. And what is it in the village that might attract them to, to, to do business here? You know, whether it's an attorney, or whether it's a restaurant, or a clothing store, an insurance company, I mean, I don't know, it might somehow, if people are here often during the week, then they may want to use some of the services that might be available in the village, because, because of the time they spend here over the course of a week.
Could I add something?
Sure.
From the, living in Lower Cape? It wasn't until I came to visit the commissioners' meetings, I discovered Barnstable, and I had an hour or two in between one day, and didn't know what to do, so I had to find my own way and discovered the offer. Didn't know it was there. So, I'm thrilled that, I think it's wonderful, because if you did have signs and you had the, the walkway, it would help people who are here discover a very beautiful place and village, so that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you. And for walking, I remember when I used to work in Plymouth Town Hall, and people were really interested in walking, we had our GIS department do a map around the whole area, a one-mile walk, a two-mile walk, a three-mile walk, and it kind of directed you where to go. And even something like that could be helpful for people.
We're starting a historical.
In terms of fitness, yes.
Doing a pamphlet, trying to, working with the Hyands Chamber on that. We have the business pamphlet.
That's just an information.
We're trying to do a walkway, extend our brick walkway along Millway to the harbor is an idea that we have, that we're gonna try to work with the town on. The village store, which we think is an anchor business, has been bought, we're very excited about it, Fancy's is going in there, so you guys can tell your employees that that's a great, a great place to get lunch, get your groceries. We hope to, with that, we hope we attract back the cleaners, some of the conveniences that our villagers have lost and you have lost as, as people that work here all day. So, it's very exciting, it's just the bottom, bottom rung of the very long ladder, but on the short term, the parking is an issue. We would like to encourage our business owners and the Cape Cod Commission, employees and the district attorney's office to work, to park in the back, so that customers, visitors can park on 6A. So, that, we can, once you get into your parking plan, love to talk to you about maybe designating some of those spots for.
And I have to say that there are times, excuse me, that there are times that even as delegates or people have parked on the street, because they, they can't find the parking in the back, and, or they'll park even, you know, I mean, I've been known to do it myself, I've snuck over, sunk over there behind the Dolphin just to run over if, since I have my own space, I kind of claim to do that.
You're just gonna say you don't have to do that anymore.
No, I don't have to do that anymore, but, you know, I have done it on a pinch. And so, I think that those are all, again, why we need the numbers that we have, the numbers we need, and how we can designate and encourage the employees to go in the back to those designated spots, and then the rest can be for, you know, then up to a certain hour for court use, and then it's over. And it would also free up the street.
Even an underground, you got that big hill, even an underground, one, two-floor garage, one underground, one on top, tucked in the corner.
Historic commission would support that?
Tucked in the corner between the district court and the jailhouse.
Parking garage?
You think we could charge for that?
Yeah.
I would suggest that you don't charge for that.
Well, you.
If you want to encourage your district court people to.
Well, I'm trying to do, is trying to figure out a way that we could actually build it, because we had some revenue stream that went with it, because I think a parking garage is an excellent way of looking at the footprint that we have and maximizing the opportunity to, let's say, to use this space for all of the purposes that you mentioned.
Well, but if you charge for it, then the people that would not elect to use it if there's, you know, I would not elect to use it if there was other parking places.
Especially the exorbitant fees, but I think that there's, there is a way to maybe to somehow look at that issue without just dismissing it totally, and I think that, somebody was telling me the other day, because I was talking about this meeting, and they said that Commissioner Kroll, Edward Kroll, way back when, actually did have gates where you did have to pay to come in here, there were gates down here at the entrances.
There were gates, but there was no charge.
There was no charge.
He was going to impose a charge, and I believe he was taken to court, and I believe the court found, since there was no parking, like for indigent clients or those types, they couldn't charge a fee, I think that's what the.
And I don't think it told just to control it is a good idea, but I think that there's designated.
What you can do is charge people for the more convenient parking.
Right.
And then you make the longer walk for.
There's another way of doing it.
Yeah.
Well, those are all just ideas, nothing is in stone, but those are ways of looking at it.
Well, we have had significant.
Well, we have had a significant investment of time and energy in parking schemes in the past, including having shuttle service from the, you know, let's say, from other larger parking areas, you know, to bring people into the complex. We have seen an increase in the use of public transportation with regard to all of the fixed route services that we have. And in January, there'll be fixed route service throughout the Cape, which is one of the things that had come up at the last NPO meeting. We got funding, you know, to support that. So, I think that everything that we look at, both with you, keeping people in their automobile, and also offering alternatives, that we could get people to this area without using their automobile, should all be integrated into your planning and thinking.
Yep. One of the uses that we have experienced with the county parking is when you all are gone on the weekends. We have overflow parking from Millway Beach and the harbor. And again, we tried to work with the shuttle system when the bulkhead was being repaired because there was no parking. But that didn't work out, because they didn't want to add routes. But.
Was that before the president's administration, you know, as far as the, as far as supporting legitimate venues? Because right now, the RTA is very open to looking at how to successfully support public transportation venues, so.
You're talking about the RTA's administration? Yeah, it was before them.
Okay, so I think that, you know, I've worked very hard on this part, to make sure that the public transportation opportunities were open. I believe that door is open, so let's take a look at that.
Yeah, we should have a conversation about that, so we can coordinate that with the WellWatch. For instance, that's a big issue with the WellWatch people, having a place to park. So, that's one thing. The other issue that we, that's short-term, that we would like to bring up is the use of the parking area, and maybe even the green space, and maybe even something more permanent for a bandstand or a community gathering place. I'm long, along about, like the Chatham Green, or the Dennis Green with the, with the bandstand configuration. Because we did, thankfully, were able to use the parking lot for a, it was called the Jailhouse Jam. And it was a very successful evening in the rain with a band, about 500 people came. And it was just a wonderful evening, kids playing with their kites, families enjoying picnics. So, it was a very nice evening, and it was a, it was a partnership with probably, without your, too much of your knowledge, although Mark knew.
No, we did too.
You knew, but, so it was a great utilization of that space.
So, you're going in competition with the Town Green?
So, I was, I was saying.
No, we had, you know, we're not in, that's the Hyands, this is our village green, you know?
But I was saying how that worked out to be a sort of a natural amphitheater, because you use the grassy bank there, and then the band was on the tar.
Parking line, yeah.
Yeah, on the parking, parking area, so.
Well, one of my ideas, a lot of opportunities.
Yes, there are a lot of ideas, and.
You could probably get a donation of the structure itself.
Well, yes. Well, we'll see how that goes.
Maybe it's something like AmeriCorps could do as a community, a service day, too, is, you know, they do construction, they've constructed boardwalks and walkways, they might be able to construct like a seating amphitheater or something.
And we do get, we've seen the generosity of certain, you know, local businesses like Shepley, that, you know, that have contributed materials. So, if we could work together on that, that might, that might be something to pursue.
You have to be careful about impinging on the sledding in the winter.
That's right. Yes, that's right, that's what I was thinking. So, we were thinking we're on the side where the greenhouse is. And actually, we've had donors in the village that donated the Harbor Masters Office, our elaborate, Harbor Masters Office down. It's not the million-dollar Harbor Masters Office.
But it's still, it's still nice. It is very exciting. So, I think what, what I, what we would like to do is, you know, just state that we'd like the commission and us to be, you know, continuing to work with you. And, and to make that, you know, those meetings regular, and see if we can come up with these plans. Because there's a lot of ideas, but there's a lot of, you know, we have to make sure we're not having unintended consequences. They say, no, that's great, no, this is a bigger problem.
Which is why we really think it's important.
Yeah, and this is, it's, as I say, it's, we're a little late to, to the game, but the game isn't over yet, so we're.
I'm late and asking.
Yeah, yeah, well, actually, not really, because this, Joanne Miller-Buntage has asked me this several times in the past, that's why I went to go, like, a year ago to the first one. And we did say that the commission would be involved, but it wasn't, you know, it, there wasn't an immediacy or priority tag put onto it. So, I think now that we can consider like some sort of, it's in our line of priorities.
My question would be, could we, could you send us a copy of your agenda, for your meetings? And then, you know, like, when they are and what the agenda is, so that maybe if it's, or if you think that there might be a good idea for one or all of us, if you want to have an agenda item that you think that we might need to be involved in, or could contribute to? Or even if we see an agenda and say, wow, that's a good, interesting topic, I'd like to go and just see what they're going to say about that. That might be helpful, because then we could say, we could decide that whether or not that would be a good thing for one or all of us to be.
We have a subcommittee that's doing some planning. When we go out to the more public meetings, we would surely invite you.
Yeah, great. But they also, we met with Mr. Rich French and Joe.
Berlande.
Berlande, and yourself.
And was Liz Mill there? She's a part of the committee. Peter Eastman, Roberta Miller.
No, I think it was just Patty and myself, was it just, I think it was just us.
Yeah, I don't remember who attended that.
Yeah, and, 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 but they.
We need to move on.
We will, but what I'm saying is, they would like to come before us, to show us their plans to date, is what I was trying to say, is that, that particular subcommittee, so I think maybe we all.
If they would get in touch with Mark and set up a specific date, that would be great.
Yeah, we could do October, so.
Yeah, that would be nice.
And do you have copies of the plan?
We, I do, but I forgot my copy today to show. So, if you could drop off, they said that they, Rich said that he would drop several off, okay. So, if you could bring.
Don't want to give some to Patty.
If you can bring them to Patty and have them just dropped off here.
If they're available electronically, that would be useful.
That would be great.
All right. It's evolved from that plan, is all.
And if you only have like paper copies, we could do PDFs for you.
We have both.
Okay, yeah, so you could just ship them, and they can get them to us.
Well, the fact that we're all here talking together, I think is an important part, not small, but.
No, it's a big step, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for coming, Ann.
Thank you.
Anything else that you wanted to say to this matter, or suggest?
Okay, great, thank you, Patty.
Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, everyone.
The discussion on the response to the Governance Committee's request, presentation on county governance by the county commissioners. I put that on there because they've requested specifically a historical perspective, a being brought up to date, some sort of a summary. And I've asked Mark to take a look at some past presentations, and perhaps you could speak to that.
Well, when Bill mentioned this, I guess this came up last week when I wasn't here, or whenever it came up, but I thought immediately, instead of reinventing the wheel, you've given a presentation on this, you've given a presentation on this, I don't know if you've ever, but then we've done also the Charter Review Committee, we did an overview of what the charter was. So, there's a couple of presentations that I started looking at, that I think we could kind of piece together to accomplish two things. One, that will give them a perspective on the charter for people who may not be as familiar with it, or refresh their memory if they've forgotten. And two, kind of what the background has been over the evolution, these past 20-some, some-odd years of what the county's done, and what services we do, and how we're organized, and those kinds of things.
On that note, remember the presentation you made just to the assembly on the budget?
Yeah.
Not, not, well, I didn't see the one this year, but the one last year, as I remember, you went through the, briefly, I mean, it wasn't long.
Right.
But it gave a real sense of what the departments are, what they were spending.
That was the Finance 101.
That was the Finance 101.
So, that's the third one, I didn't even think of that one.
Well, I was thinking, I mean, if they're really going to understand, if they're going to talk about structure, they have to know that they're structured. And so.
What the existing is, yeah.
Yeah, I think a presentation like that, that not only gives them a sense of what the county does, but what the county's secret base on that. So, maybe that might be really helpful, because I think they get the, the large, the idea of how county government works, but many of them have no clue about what the nuts and bolts are. So, I think rather than, because Rob and Henri can give an overview, each of them in five minutes.
One of the things that Henri had mentioned, something specific, he wanted to speak to what had gone on before that 20-year period. In other words, what was the historical perspective of the county being involved in local kinds of, let's say, activities? In other words, was our role larger prior to the, you know, the charter, or what, you know, and what, you know, we ran a hospital.
Well, Rob would be able to speak to that, whether anybody here, frankly, or really, yeah.
If I could, I thought that Rob, I mean, they had the, the League of Women Voters hosted the review of county government, or whatever.
The one in the winter.
No, this one that just passed this Saturday, this last Saturday, where you had the professor, the forum on, on the changes of county government. And at that, I thought that Rob gave a very good sort of historical review. You know, he said, let's, you know, we have to go back and see how this happened. And, you know, this is where, what happened, and this is how the commission came about, and this is how the Assembly of Delegates came about, and, you know, and it really did show sort of this evolution, and then the Cape Light Compact came, and these are the different things that were, were big issues, kind of visionary items that came into play. And, you know, I think now is a time to really look at all of those different structures, and where, where do we see the role, you know, where do we see us going? I mean, what, what are the big issues that we have to face that are very much like those? And we have some of those entities in place to look at them. The commission takes, you know, is really an amazing organization, the Cape Light Compact offers great possibilities and opportunities. And how do we take those entities and look, you know, at the other issues and go forward in that type of structure? But he was very good, as you say, summing it up in about five minutes. It also seemed to me, as he was talking, he actually got the whole direction of his own commission and, and charge with that, and many other people sort of understood where they were going in that commission, that were members.
Acting as a historic, history professor, again, but he is.
And he is, and leave it to him to do it, but he's, he's, he was very good at that. I thought that was one of the most clarifying moments of that whole day. I mean, maybe for himself as well as for everyone else.
So, maybe my suggestion is not a good one.
No, I think it is.
No, I'm thinking because they're, they're asking for governance. This isn't really about governance. If they're asking for thoughts about county governance, then the nuts and bolts, the rules.
Well, but I think, you know, they can all read the charter, but I think why the charter presentation that we did, it's one that I put together and Bob Troy and I did, it basically summarizes what the charter does, piece by piece. So, they could, that's a good reference document.
I think that's a good.
Instead of having to thumb through it, that's a good, but I think a presentation that pulls together kind of the nuts and bolts, financing, operation, how we pay for things, which is kind of a key question, with just the summary overview of what we do and how it came about. So, it's kind of tying those things together. So, maybe what I'll do is work on that and bring that back to you guys as a draft.
Yeah, please, this October 5th is the meeting.
Yeah, so we have two weeks before we actually have to present, so that gives us, next Wednesday.
I should be able to bring something back to you next Wednesday.
And that would give us an opportunity to look at that, and then we could finalize our thoughts on it by the 5th. I'd also like to suggest that we, that not just one of us present, but all three of us take a role in presenting pieces of it, because I, I would suspect that this would be more than just five minutes of, you know, getting up and talking about it, that each one of us could take an area to focus on, to, let's say, to present, because after all, there are three of us, and, and going forward, I think they need to hear from all of us with regard to how, you know, how this works.
I think it's important, because I think they all need to start from the same place, because everyone comes to this charge with a whole different perspective and background on county government. And if through this, so the, to me, the idea is to help everyone start from the same place, so that they all have the same information, and they're not looking back to what they knew from the past, but what is now given to them is this is the here and now. And I think that can be very useful and save a lot of time.
You know, to speak to that and to support it, as far as where we are right now, I think that Mark has a piece, you know, an important contribution to make with regard to the financial management piece of, you know, of what's going on.
Well, I think a lot of people need to understand, where do we get our money from? Because everybody thinks it's all either assessments, or it's deeds.
Yeah, it's all deeds tax, and it isn't.
It is, I mean, and when you look at the big picture, those are actually small percentages of the world.
Well, the deeds one is obviously the biggest, but there are part of revenues that are kind of crucial to the data.
So, I would suggest that Mark would have a piece in this presentation, you know, as far as the financial management part.
Because that would help them, I think, in their thinking, in terms of where do the revenues come from, and how sustainable are those revenues going forward? So, if they're going to come up with a governance structure, it has to be something that is supported by sustainable revenues, otherwise the structure won't, won't be effective, obviously.
I think that's accurate. So, at this point, I think that we have a, I feel a consensus with regard to the kinds of things we'd like to look at. We've given Mark a charge to sort of draw this together. We're going to review this next week, as far as, you know, as far as looking at it, getting a draft in, and perhaps it might, if we got that before that time.
I will, I'll try to do it for Monday, I'll try to get you a draft on Monday.
Okay, if we had it beforehand, we would at least have something to start with, and then at that point, we could make our own contribution with regard to which part we want to own with regard to presentation, and then we could, you know, then finalize it the following week, and then be prepared to present.
Yeah, and if we, and if we can do that mostly as a PowerPoint already written, so they can get that ahead of time, and then it's, we're not taking all of their time, because they really have work to do.
I'm going to put it in two pieces, Bill, because I know they're meeting on the 5th, but unfortunately, my wife is in San Jose at a conference, so I won't be able to go to their 5th, the meeting on the 5th. So, maybe I'll do one piece on kind of the overview that you guys will do, and then I'll do the finance piece as a second.
And you can send that ahead of time to them, and be there for questions or whatever. Maybe it might not, it would be better probably for them to be asking you, because that would be the working questions.
To see it ahead of time, sure.
Yeah.
Well, now that they have Pat Eldridge doing.
Oh, great, that's right.
Exactly.
Yeah, that was the best news that I heard.
No, and I think that's a very good thing, because that way they have control over everything, they're not waiting or putting it on anybody else.
Yeah, Rob and I are not the best administrators.
But one of the things I think is important is to make sure that we do have appropriate notice for the meeting on the 5th, so it isn't an organization.
Yeah, I've already seen it, and I'll get it to Karen, make sure she posts it.
We do want the public to be aware of it, and to, to be there to observe. They did say, and I think this is a very important piece, that there would be meetings in which the public would be encouraged to participate and provide input. And I would say, you know, looking at the camera, that, that people should start thinking about that right now, for those who are interested enough to watch what we do, that this is their opportunity to, you know, to both comment and make, make some significant contribution for their thoughts as far as being, being integrated into the overall outcome.
Right. And the next meeting is October 5th at 6:30 at the Assembly of Delegates Hearing Room, so that, and it will be open to the public, but not for public participation, because it is a working group. And they, but they will have open public participation meetings throughout the Cape.
There is one thing that we should follow up with, I'll probably see Terry join us, but he had indicated an ability to do the streaming on this.
Yeah, the video.
The video, right. Well, there wouldn't be video, it would be streaming.
Well, you have to have Steve there then, or whoever we choose, Steve, to do it and hook it up to the website, is what you're talking about. So, you need somebody there for the video piece anyways.
Have we made arrangements to have that done?
I, this is the first time I've heard of it.
Okay, I think we need to talk about that.
Nobody's contacted.
About, I'm sorry. The streaming, oh, the streaming, yes.
Hiring Steve.
Yeah, because there was some, there was some interest in, in how would you get public participation if they're not coming up to do it? So, there needs, that piece needs to be there. The question comes up is whether or not it's in our budget to, you know, to be able to support it. So, I think we have to get some information from you next week, as far as what our ability to support it.
There's only so many meetings, too. It's not like there's going to be, it's not like it's an annoying year.
You've got to decide whether you want to do it or not. You've got to decide whether you want to do it or not.
Yeah, and they also have to decide that, yeah.
But I think the most important thing for us is to see whether or not there is funds available to support it from our end as to, or to whether or not to put it on them to find some other means to do it.
May I just say, I think that this discussion also highlights the need for the county to look at its public outreach and public information function, which I think should, could be strengthened and be very helpful, so that's all.
Oh, and the other thing, now that you mentioned that, talking about information, even though this is not our committee, it's an independent special commission that we have designated, just like in the vegetation management, you know, on our website, we had a, there's a bullet for vegetation management, if you want to go back and look at those records and the minutes and all of that stuff. Can we set, you know, a lot of people were saying to the committee.
Build a special.
Well, you could just go on the county website and find the charter, and you can find the information about the Assembly delegates. Well, where? So that means every committee member has to go and go on the website and find this. Is there a place where we can sort of glean those, take those documents, even though some of them are under the county commissioners, some of them are under the assembly, and put them on a thing? And if they have minutes, we can post it for the public and just say, this is in reference, just so that there is one spot for people to look at, and we can post the meetings on there.
Yeah, because then you can just link the stuff to where the charter is.
And all of the members will be able to say, oh, those are where those documents are, I can go on, this is what, what we're reading, or what we have read, or there's the reference.
You can post these presentations.
I think it would just be easier because it was all sort of put out there, like, well, you can look at this. I mean, that's just all very time consuming. And not all of our websites are, you know, is easy to find, that it takes some time digging, mining those sites.
Meta-tagging so that people can go what they're interested in. But that, you know, that's another piece for us.
Well, that's another piece, but as long as we could get that up there, I think that that would be helpful to the committee, helpful to the public, helpful to the press. So that they can guide us along.
I, I think that we've sort of gotten to the end of that. I don't think there's anything else we need to talk about until we see, until we see a draft of that part of the presentation. So you're two, two parts. One, see whether or not we have money available in that. And the other part is the draft, which at this point would be in two pieces, right? Okay, now, the, at this point, we have some time before we see Mike McGuire, so I'm going to suggest that we look at the Needs Action.
Yes. I make a motion that we approve the Needs Action. I'll second.
Okay, before, in discussion, the minutes would be part of this. And in the minutes, I, I did see that there was some, with regard to item three in the minutes, Ethics Commission Item, Discussion Referral Issue with Bob Troy County Council. I believe that there was some, I had given a specific direction to Maggie to, to respond to that individual that, you know, that had asked for that. And I want to make sure that that's, that that item.
What is the reference?
In the minutes, okay, under item three, Ethics Commission Item, Discussion Referral Issue with Bob Troy County Council. Okay, as part of that item, I had given a specific direction to Maggie to draft a response to the individual who had asked for the discretionary referral. And that, I think that the minutes should be amended to, you know, to accommodate that.
Okay, may I see that? I don't have.
You should probably just note that, Bill, because I don't know the nature of the discussion.
I upgraded my operating system, you know, on my Mac, so now I have a little trouble sometimes printing some of this. I don't know why.
Well, I notice on my system, I have, I can't open up PDFs every once, like, every other time I try to open up a PDF on my, on the, on my computer, it, it doesn't let me do it. I have to, I have to drag it off to a site, and then it opens up as a download. So there is some, you know, there is some difficulty with that.
So can you just note, Bill, what your amendment is? Because I, I'm clear completely on the context.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I know what you mean, too.
So just note that, let me have it, and then, so you, it's a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, so, so that would be, you know, that would be incorporated into the whole.
Well, no, that's a separate, because it's a motion to approve as amended, minutes.
Okay, is there a?
I'll second that.
You make the motion, and I'll second.
Okay, any other, any further discussion? Okay, hearing all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So I have Sheila move, Pat second.
And now we'll go back to the main motion, which is to approve the Needs Action. There was an amendment, now, now as amended, okay.
Yes, I would like to approve the Needs Action as amended. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's the.
Good, thank you.
All right, at this point, since we, Mike McGuire isn't due till 11 o'clock, with the exception of signing documents, I'd like to propose that we go into recess.
I second that. I will make a motion that we go into recess until 11 o'clock.
You guys could do your reports if you want, no?
Reports, yeah, we could do our reports.
Okay.
And I could do that, I just have a couple things.
Okay, well, do you have any reports on stuff you can do?
Yeah, I have several. Well, they're not really reports, I mean, I can just say that I've, you know, met with David Augustina yesterday, and Beth, they're talking about a grant that Beth received in setting up economic employment opportunities. It's a very short-term turnaround, four months of a partnership with WIB. So we discussed the nuts and bolts of that yesterday. I don't have that document in front of me, but I will make sure that you get a copy. I was involved with, I've been in ongoing conversations with various people in Yarmouth about the motel situation there, being the co-chair of the Regional Network. I had been alerted that there was going to be some action on the 15th, and then again on the 21st, that there was going to be another eviction. And, you know, those things make me concerned because when you start having, you know, everybody out there, that the town is going to go in and evict someone, you know, the sides line up, everybody gets into their bunkers, you know, and their trenches, and then there's really no discussion about the people in the middle. So that always concerns me. And so I did call the town, and I had a long conversation with Peter Staub Johnson, who assured me that the town does not evict anyone, it's landlords, they don't own the property. Although they are trying to pressure this gentleman to do something and to be responsible about it. We have held a couple of help fairs, we have worked with the town of Yarmouth in setting those up as the Regional Network, and Beth has been a real big coordinator in that. And there is going to be another help fair on the 5th, and then there's going to be another one on the 18th, and following up with the individuals that are still there. Some people are there, you know, because they're single, or it's a good rent, I mean, by, by choice. Some people are there because that's exactly what they can afford. Some people can do this on a week-to-week basis, and they can't really afford a one, one-month chunk. So I've often been saying, you know, maybe we should identify what are the barriers to people, you know, what are their barriers? Some of it's abuse, substance abuse, or mental abuse, or physical, you know, impairment. However, there are some people that are just, that are, you know, sort of unfortunately our lower-income working, working people. They're not, they're not, not working, they are. So how can we, is there a way that we can help them, you know, look at their finances? And this is where all case management comes in, and of course, there's not enough money for case management. But I do think that there is some direction we can give. So we're actively involved in, in helping where we can not to get in the way of Yarmouth because I do, I do see what the town of Yarmouth is doing. I do see that they're in some of these areas that this is a, there is a little hub for crime in some of the, you know, they're, they're vulnerable, some of the people in these motels, they can be preyed upon. And that is a concern. But that doesn't mean that they're any less, they won't be preyed upon if we just throw them out in the street. So, and, and the town doesn't want that, but they want to, they want to be able to revitalize their town, and I, I totally support that. So if we can all come together and talk about these issues in a rational way and not be taking sides, but to be focusing on the people that are affected, I would be very pleased, and that's what I'm trying to foster there. I am, I've also been involved with the National Seashore, they have the issue in Chatham. Superintendent George Price was alerted by Graham Geis, who is, you know, the scientist parlance really for very many years, has a lot of expertise and respect out of coastal studies in the Provincetown area, who did an inspection of these areas, of these properties that they have out on that north beach. And the seashore owns five. Two are definitely in real danger of not surviving this next winter. And there are three that probably have two to three years left. Now, these, these houses came into the possession of the National Seashore, I guess, when it was, when it became the National Seashore. And then they were leased to the individuals who used them for 25 years. Then in 1998, that went to a year-by-year basis. So all of the leases know that this is a matter of time, that it's a year-by-year, and it's only a matter of time. However, because of the urgency that George felt from the reports of his scientists, he felt that time, you know, he only had so much time to issue a notice that this, that these were not going to be able to be habitable, that they were going to have to do something. You know, then he's looking at the weather timeline, if I have to do this notice by such and such a date, they have to have their belongings out by such and such a date, the lease goes to January. So I think some of the pushback is that it was, well, we thought we were good until January, we weren't going to be facing this type of discussion. Number two, they have, there's a disagreement on, are they really going to go in the ocean? And then in the, in the advisory council, there was a lot of talk about, should the, should the ocean just reclaim, you know, these things? Which is really an environmentally irresponsible way of letting nature to, if you know that a building is going to be washed into the seas, whether they're hooked up to lots of infrastructure, or you have a couple of refrigerators and propane tanks in there, it's still, if you can keep something from, you know, there's enough stuff in our ocean. So I could see where George was coming from. In retrospect, he says that maybe he should have handled it differently in going to the, to the selectmen or to the North Beach Association, saying this is the information I've gotten, we have a problem here, how can we resolve it? So I think that that's the tack that we're going.
But you're reporting on what they're doing, not what we.
Well, our role is that I have encouraged this, this harmonious intersection, and, and I think that we're going to be having a field trip soon with the players to take a look with Graham, to show us what it is that's so urgent, and what are the options that we can go through. But the town of Chatham is, you know, they're facing their 300th anniversary next year, a lot of it has cultural significance. Even though the first time I saw them, like, 15 years ago, I was like, how did those get out there? Who allowed those to be built out there? But that's, you know, and there's a lot of, I mean, even, even the representative from Chatham had his own building removed. I mean, he had, because he saw that that was the responsible thing to do, and it was his, it was time. But he has a disagreement if it's time for these other ones. So that's where Chatham is, that's where we're sort of putting our two cents in. Bill Clark attended that meeting as well. And then we met in regards to a few other things that I, that are more items of executive session about different prospects that we can pursue. And, and Mark knows some of this, and that's really executive session type of stuff, so that once we have a conversation, that we can go to them.
Okay, so that's.
That's about shell fisheries and that sort of thing, that type of, yeah, that, so that's something that we have to talk about offline. So I've been busy, although sometimes, you know, it's hard to, to keep up on how busy you've been.
Well, I think that we should acknowledge the retirement of Maggie Geis. I mean, we all know that she has retired, but just formally, I think as the board of county commissioners.
I agree.
To thank her for her years of service to the APCC. And, and also, I think the search committee, I believe, has completed their work. I don't know who they have selected, but I think they'll probably have an announcement sometime very soon. At least that's what I understand. So I think I'm just simply saying thank you very much to Maggie Geis for a great job.
Do you think there should be a letter or a certificate?
I think we could, we could send her a letter.
We could send her a letter. Yeah, I think that would be a nice thing to do, and thank her for all the work on behalf of the county.
All right, so a lot of us should sign this.
Absolutely.
Mark, could you draft such a letter for us?
Yes, because.
The other thing I want to mention is that the MMR, Mass Military Reservation, is having an open house this weekend, Saturday, all day Saturday and all day Sunday, starting at nine o'clock, with all kinds of exhibitions, and, and they're also having a sock op on Saturday night, if anybody's.
I can't, I'll be late.
You're single, you could go, right?
I'm just conveying information.
I see.
Tomorrow is the legislative breakfast with the Suicide Coalition.
Yes, yes, that's true.
And this is Suicide Prevention Month, and so the, the legislators are going to meet with Coalition tomorrow at the Resort Conference Spa. I thought it was very interesting, the announcement in the paper, that Senators Kerry and Brown have formed an Ocean Management Caucus, and they are going to look at all of the issues surrounding the oceans, which also include, I thought in between the lines was contamination of the oceans. And I thought, hmm, wastewater, you know, nitrogen. And I thought, maybe somewhere along the line, they get some money together, that might be some source. I was, I just read the article in the paper, and I thought, wow, if they're going to consider all of the stuff that goes into the ocean that needs to get cleaned up, then maybe there might be some federal funding down the pipeline.
Well, everybody knows that it doesn't go in the waste stream, it doesn't have to be cleaned up later, does it?
Right. The other thing I wanted to mention is on October 5th, there is a big celebration of Falmouth around the world. You would be amazed at the number of countries in the world that have towns or cities called Falmouth. And this was, this is being organized by Falmouth Scotland. The Rotary Clubs of the two towns, Falmouth Mass, Falmouth Scotland, have gotten together. They're celebrating their 350th, and I think we had our, or 325th, I've forgotten, somewhere in the 300s. It must be 325, because we had our 300th in 1986. So there's a big celebration at the Sea Chris on October 5th.
The Sea Chris all done over now?
Oh, yes, I haven't been there, but they say it's really beautiful. And so that's.
By the way, what does Falmouth mean?
What does it mean?
Yeah, because every, you know, every town has some sort of, you know, the name means something.
I don't know.
I'm going to charge you to find out.
All right, I'll find out what it means. It probably originated in Scotland, so we'll find out. Anyway, that's, that's what I have to say.
So I can think of Scotland, maybe Australia. I can't think of many others.
Some places in South America. I don't know if it's Chile, or if it's, is it Chile?
Yeah, she said countries.
Yeah, so a couple of South American countries, and, and maybe Australia, and maybe some places, you know, Europe, and, and maybe even in Asia, I'm not sure. But I read all these, these places, and I thought, wow, that's pretty amazing, that all of those places have a, because it doesn't seem like it would fit, it seems like it fits here, and it might fit in Scotland.
The Scots, right, the Scots going around and conquered all those places.
Australia maybe, but like Falmouth, Cambodia, I don't know, that doesn't kind of work.
Well, you know, we had, this is the Rotary Club, they had a contingent from Falmouth Scotland over here about, I don't know, I think it was in July. And they had a breakfast for them at Crudamas, and so I went, and I met, and they were all young women. And one of them was a Public Works Director, and one was, one was a treasurer in a town in, in Falmouth Scotland. And it was just so interesting to meet them and, and have them describe what their life is like in a, in a, in a government, and what ours is like, very different, obviously. But it was kind of interesting.
That's, that's wonderful.
Yes, that's it for me.
Okay, I went to the band graduation on Friday.
Oh, yes.
That's.
In the courthouse, yeah.
At the courthouse, where they are providing what I'd call a very important alternative to incarceration for drug offenders.
I regret to say that.
And it's, it's quite, it's quite intense, you know, for the people that, you know, that are going through. And over the years, I guess, when Mary LeClair was here, I guess there was, you know, we would hear about it more often. But nevertheless, it's still going on. Judge Riden did show up as a, you know, let's say as a, as a visitor, and was given recognition. And they're doing wonderful work there. So the alternative to, to drug abuse is certainly there. So we all went to, we all reported on going to the, the first meeting of the Governance Committee.
The special commission.
Special commission. I, I guess, we have to, you know, we come up with all this alphabet soup and names and stuff like that.
So special commission, that's what it is.
I finally had that down, I got it right today. I got it right today. I was just impressed with the group.
Oh, it was amazing.
It's an amazing group of people, and everybody showed. I think that they invited that many, thinking some people were going to say no, and everybody said yes. There is a question from the audience.
Oh, yes. Is the commission appointed at this point?
Yes.
Not by us. They convene themselves.
I think the answer was, you guys appointed Henri and.
We empowered them to appoint.
And Rob. And then Rob and Henri were able to select.
Yes, by empowering them and giving them the authority to appoint.
But where was that spelled out?
That was spelled out in our last meeting by our attorney, Troy, who did.
Troy, yeah, clarified that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the band committee, and I have one other thing, let's see.
If we have a.
Oh, yeah, there was, there was a question that came up. We had gotten some notice about visiting boards of selectmen, and you were going to bring us up to date as far as those schedules.
Department manager's still working on the Town Services Report. Those are due to be completed in a couple of weeks. And so then we'll have Kara pick up on rescheduling those.
We need to plan, we need to have a meeting, we plan what we're going to talk about.
I'd like to have a coincident.
Yeah, I would rather.
You know, have a conversation about that.
I would rather, yeah, I think we should have a conversation of what exactly we would like to talk about, because there's a lot of things going on that are half, are in the place, and that's, yeah.
But we do need to discuss something.
I think that that would be.
But at the same time, I want to reemphasize the fact that when we go to these boards of selectmen meeting, it isn't so much talking to the board itself, but using it opportunities a venue to talk to constituents, to give more visibility to county government. Because when we go there and say, do you have any questions, we're basically dismissed by the board of selectmen because they're very busy. But it is an opportunity to communicate to the public that we're trying to reach, and I don't want to miss that opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Especially if somebody were thinking about running again. I think we'd want to.
Anybody know?
Yeah.
Are you thinking of running again, Bill? You just ran.
You're going to be leaving.
I'm leaving. I'm heading to the State House for a meeting with the Speaker.
And I am going to, if I can take two minutes of.
Local aid.
We're going to recess.
Can we go into recess for 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you signed everything?
No.
Okay. I'm reconvening the September 21st session of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and we are reconvening with a presentation on the LED flares program by Mike McGuire of Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. And I want to extend my welcome to all of the, we might say.
The brass.
The hot-wacky brass of the Public Safety Operation here in Cape Cod. Welcome, you know, welcome to our meeting. Thank you so much for coming.
Do you mind if I stand in Mary Pat's?
Please.
Please do. And Mike, the record should reflect this, since you're all dressed up, you're not really working.
I know. I deal with hazards, waste every day, and so it's, you know, seeing me in a suit is kind of entertaining, I guess, to some. So my name's Mike McGuire, I worked for Barnstable County, I've worked for the county. Mark and I were just talking, it's my 13th year with the county. I worked with AmeriCorps for, when I was 21, and then moved up to doing some grant writing, and I've worked with the extension for the past three years, operating the hazardous waste and water quality program for the county. As many of you, or all of you know as first responders, we, the county does a collection, flares collection program. So items like the handheld road flares and marine flares are things that many of your departments see and are dealing with. And I worked as a summer special police officer in Chatham, went through the police academy, and I get the road flare training, as I'm sure most of you guys have gotten. And we all know the deal with these. They are an important tool in first response, for first responders, but they're a pain, they often don't work, or they don't work properly, they burn out, and they're difficult to manage. As a added bonus to a traditional road flare, they contain perchlorate, which is a thyroid-inhibiting substance, and one of these road flares can contaminate 1.3 million gallons of drinking water. The state of Massachusetts, a few years ago, actually put in a threshold for perchlorate in drinking water. So if you have a contamination, it will actually shut down a well. It's a significant problem, and something that I'm so happy you guys are willing to address with us. I know as first responders, when you're out dealing with a disabled vehicle, or you're needing to light a road flare, probably the last thing you're thinking about is perchlorate contamination. But to that end, I appreciate your willingness and interest in participating in a program where the county can provide replacement flares to you. So the two styles that we offered to the first responders were the power flare style, electronic flare. They have eight or nine different functions. The LED flares, they have lithium ion batteries, it's supposed to last about eight years. So this will be pretty nice to be able to replace what you currently have in the back of your response vehicles. And these are the electronic flares. They can get mounted on the side of cones, or set on the top of equipment, or set on the side of the road. So the Barnstable County, in cooperation with TURIE, the Toxic Use Reduction Institute, put together $23,000 to purchase these electronic flares for every community on Cape Cod that wanted them. We sent letters out to each of your departments, and you all responded. While we weren't able to fulfill the entirety of your requests, we did set a limit of 50 per, 50 of these power flares per department, and 80 of these per department, these are less expensive. We were able to get you most of what you needed or had requested. So in the bags on the side of the room, each of you has, has a bag that's labeled with these power flares and electronic flares. They're yours to take home, and we appreciate the fact that you're willing to participate in this, in this program. And I know that the county footed the bill, but honestly, we wouldn't be able to do it unless you were willing to use these, so. You know, we have some other examples of road flares and marine flares up here, that you guys probably also get to see. We cover these, these are the parachute style flares that are used on boats, and we have the mortar and the shotgun style flares that are also used and collected in most fire departments. So with that, I was wondering if there's anybody in the audience that might want to talk about, any, any police or fire rep that might want to talk about electronic flares, or how they're used, or how you use flares in general in your department, so.
Lieutenant DeVries from Born. We've used those now, I think, probably for three or four years when they first came out. I believe it came to our department, and we did a little commercial for it with a couple of our officers. And we've utilized, we didn't have them in all our cars at that time. Hopefully, with this year's purchase and the allotment, we'll be able to put them in all our cruisers. But primarily at accidents, we've been using them. And it seems to have worked well for the officers that do have them in their cars. A lot of times DMVs, we've used them. Unfortunately, a couple of times, the officers have left them and drove them, and driven away and left them behind. But from the feedback that I received from our officers, it was very positive. But when we bought those flares, we used to buy them when they were on sale, so we've got a few of them left. We're trying to wean them down, and hopefully, if you do this on an ongoing yearly system and so forth, hopefully, we'll have enough to, you know, put them in all our cruisers and have backups if we should use them. But primarily, we use them at accident scenes, DMVs, things like that, any place that the offices would utilize, just the regular conventional flares. And, you know, some of the things, like anything else, something new, changing, a lot of times, a lot of the older guys still will use the, you know, the old conventional flares, but hopefully, we'll be able to wean them away with this new batch of these flares.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to try these, and, you know, these power flares in particular, you can run them over, you know, they've had videos, and they're pretty much indestructible, so.
I just wanted to comment, after Hurricane Irene hit.
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Detective Kevin Higgins, Orleans Police Department. After Hurricane Irene hit, we lost power down in Orleans for quite a stretch of time. And of course, we lost all the power at our, at our traffic lights. So we set up stop signs at each of the traffic lights with a flare. And with the seven sets of lights we have in town, it was 28 flares that had to be set up, and the flare runs about 20 minutes. So we had one cruiser that was going around, and its whole purpose was to reset the flares. One intersection, we were able to use, we had purchased some turbo, turbo flares, the LED. We had one intersection set up with that, and it worked unbelievable. I mean, it was, it was an intersection we didn't have to worry about with those flares in place. The other, it basically would, having these are going to be able to free up an officer for, to respond to calls. So just setting, the other thing I wanted to mention was the regular road flares that we use, out of the 50 that are in a box, traditionally, or I should say, historically, about an eighth of them wouldn't work, or we couldn't get them, couldn't get them started. So, and that's frustrating as well, so, thank you.
And if I could ask, you didn't, you didn't feel that there was any less difference? I mean, their, their ability to warn public approaching, whether it be motor vehicles or pedestrians, you could see it the same?
It was perfect.
It was.
They were actually brighter, I think, than the flares. The LEDs were very clear. The flares are smoky, and the problem is, when they get down to about a quarter, they lose some of their illumination. And the turbo flares, we had set up at one big intersection, we had worked flawlessly all night long, and we had them set for two days.
And they don't boot the air as well as the wall?
Right. And something that, you know, to think about with those perchlorate flares, especially when you're setting them up in water resource areas, is, you know, you guys know, it's things where you have to clean them up, you know, you can't just leave a half burned flare, because, like I said, I mean, there, we'll have, any of you have been to the Fire Training Academy, know the issues down there as well with perchlorate. It's something that we're constantly dealing with, and we're aware of, and I think it speaks volumes about the county that they're willing to put this money up. And I think the commissioners were being willing to put the, put the money towards new technologies, and hopefully, this'll, this'll be something that moves the departments in the right direction, so.
Does anybody else have any other, anything to add?
The one thing, Lieutenant Gagin from the Harwich Police, is that shortly after, we received a gift from you folks before with the, they were orange, pink colored. We had a tractor trailer unit loaded with diesel, T-bone in Harwich. And if we had thrown flares out, it wouldn't have went over too well. And we surrounded the area with the turbo.
Blame the fire department, right?
It worked great. We were able to cordon off the whole area, each other's streets, sound just with those, as we called them at the time, the hockey box. And it worked great, so, it's just another aspect of that.
Well, thank you very much. And I would just add to what Mike is saying, is that one of the concerns that we have is how do we collect these perchlorate, you know, imbued flares, you know, and get them out of service? Because we know the significant bad contribution that it makes to the environment, you know, when they're being used. They are intended, like all things, to provide a method of public safety and visibility so that the public would not be placed at greater danger because of being in proximity of an accident. But the interest that the commissioners have had historically is, how do we address something that is supposed to be providing public safety, and also not have a significant effect, impact on the environment? Your predecessor, Marlon Loebz, was treated this almost as a religion, as I remember, you know, as far as it, and I think the public needs to know something about the local collection process that you have. I believe that all the police stations, fire stations in the community, why don't you speak to that?
There's a list of, I can, since this is on television, we can go through the list, and if you're a listener at home, this is where marine and road flares are collected in each town. Barnstable Fire Department, Barnstable Police Department on Finney's Lane, West Barnstable Fire Department, Born Fire Department, Brewster Fire Department, Chatham Fire and Rescue, Dennis Fire, Eastham Fire, Falmouth Fire, Harwich Fire, Mashpee at the Department of Public Works, which is on 350 Meeting House Road, Orleans Fire, Provincetown Harbor Master, Provincetown PD, Sandwich Fire Department, Truro Transfer Station, which is just off of Route 6, Wellfleet Fire Department, Yarmouth Fire Department, and then the Yarmouth Residential Drop Off Area at the Transfer Station. So every town does have a location. And I just want to make sure I also mention again that TURIE, the Toxic Use Reduction Institute, was also instrumental in originally funding the grant that got the flare program going, and that they were so interested in this program that they came back for a second round and provided another $3,000, so. I don't know if you would like to, we do have a rep from TURIE, I don't know if you'd like to speak, but.
I just want to say thank you again for everything. This is a great program, and we are very happy that you are all interested in participating. So again, thank you so much.
Since the commercial representative is here, there are what I'd call individual needs and uses for these. How could someone from the public who needs to have some type of flare support, or is interested in this, you know, in these kind of devices, how would they get them for, you know, for personal use?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again?
How would somebody get these for personal use? Because I, I don't know, are these a proof of votes now?
So TURIE's the funder, I can explain the system, but then, you would, what you want to do is search the internet for electronic flare devices, and there's many, many different organizations that make them. What was the name? I'm sorry, someone said it wasn't, we have e-flare and power flare, I think there was turbo flare. Turbo flare. So there's many different groups. These, you know, at our bulk purchase rate, we got these for $48 apiece, they're probably going to be more like 55 to the normal person, and these were 24, so probably closer to 30. But if you wanted to have one in the back of your vehicle, I much prefer having one of these than a traditional perchlorate flare, so.
Yes.
I'm not sure about the rest of the towns, but in Orleans, we're happy to take the flares. I would ask everyone, don't just drop them at the front door. Speak to somebody. That triggers a different response. To somebody in the building.
Oh, yeah. I don't want to have this as part of an ICS incident.
All right, agreed. So with that, I think maybe we can just take a quick opportunity to get a picture with everybody with the bags in the corner, and get you guys out of here. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I believe that we get all of our business done?
That is it.
Okay, so I think I have a.
Good to see all of you.
I should mention, next meeting, the 20th.
Did you make your recall?
10 o'clock, I did, yeah. We're going to do the AmeriCorps swearing in ceremony next week.
On the 28th?
10 o'clock, yep.
That's next Wednesday?
Yep.
Wow, it's flying.
Yes, it is. How's your daughter doing?
Excellent.
We talked to.
Not a Yankee fan this week.
No way, they're going to be down, they're down there this weekend.
Oh, that's right.
They're in the Bronx.
That's right.
So I told her that she should go get some.
Today's their last, all right, thank you.